At this point, we are ready to open the public hearing. This is the public comment section of all of this. What I would ask first, and we're going to deal with just the Community Services Board to begin meeting. How many here are here to speak for Community Services Board? Okay. How many here are to speak against Community Services Board? Okay. That's going to definitely shorten the time that we're going to have to be involved in this. So, the Planning Commission Public Comment Section is officially open. I'm going to need you guys to open your meeting.
We'll open up the public hearing for City Council.
Okay. Speaking for, who wants to go first? And what I'm going to ask you to do, come to the podium, give us your name, any other affiliation you may have, and what do you need to say to us? I didn't know you were going to give us a handout.
I always do.
Excuse me.
I'll give you one after I'm finished, I'm sorry. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to thank anyone who showed up on behalf of this matter, whether it be for or against. You have a right to voice your opinion. Members of the Planning Commission and members of the City Council, I'm speaking to you on behalf of the Community Services Board in support of the Crisis Retention Center. I don't know much about the detox center because a lot of that is beyond my scope of duty, but I will be speaking on the crisis center. That will hopefully be on the side of 214 Lexington Avenue. As many of you are aware, my department is responsible for transporting anyone who is subject of a detention order, a temporary detention order or emergency custody order. This order states that a person may be taken to a treatment facility, and many of those, as Ms. Barber said earlier, are halfway across the Commonwealth of Virginia. And most of the time, they do not have vacancies. This causes a tremendous stress on my budget, whether it be paying someone overtime, paying for the travel expenses on the vehicles. Maintenance is not any cheaper than it was a few years ago, so this has become a very costly matter to the Commonwealth of Virginia. I recently spoke with the Attorney General, and the General Assembly will be seeking some more legislation regarding this matter coming up soon. But right now, we have what we have. And so, as Ms. Barber said, a lot of times, my deputies are sitting in the emergency room with a person who's going through a crisis situation, up to 72 hours at a time. And that's 24 hours a day. So you take that 72 hours, and that adds up to a lot of money at an overtime rate. This does not take into account the number of people who voluntarily commit themselves for treatment. They do not have to be set with until an order is placed that confines them to a facility. So, a lot of people are coming into our facilities at the emergency rooms and at the Crisis Intervention Center, which is located at the emergency room. And these people have to be seen. Sometimes people are going through things, and they need a little assistance. To date, this year, we have transported 262 persons for mental health reasons. This facility will be a little bit different than most, as it will be available for juvenile and adult treatment, as Ms. Barber said. In Virginia, there's approximately 20 beds available. And the juveniles, you know, it's hard to get them in. They're the ones who've suffered when they have to sit in an emergency room for that long with parents who have to alter their jobs and everything else to be able to sit with their children. This makes it very difficult to accommodate a child's needs when they are suffering through a mental health crisis. And local children will be a priority at this center. There will be full-time staff to manage the facility, as well as CIT officers from my department to assist in the process, as well as taking custody of any emergency cases where they are committed. They will take custody of those people at that time. Currently, the emergency room houses these individuals from Allegheny County. And to be quite honest, an emergency room should be used to treat sick people, not people who are suffering through a crisis. That's not the reason for an emergency room. Patients will not be allowed to wander around the neighborhood. They will not be allowed to just wander around the facility. The facility will be protected by coming to Police Department, as well as the Allegheny County Sheriff's Office. I'm almost finished. Allegheny County has one of the highest percentages of mental health treatment in the entire Commonwealth of Virginia. That's why this building is so important. This can be attributed to the high unemployment rate and the drug availability in our community. I'd like to go on record and support the construction of this project, and hope that you will as well. Thank you.
Okay. You want over about 1 minute 28 seconds to try and get it out for somebody else?
Sir, you're from your own time there, sir.
All right. Next person, come on up. I need you to state your name, please, for the record.
I'm David Crandall. I still have a little piece of medicine. I'm the medical director at Maryfield, which is a Community Service Board residence for ill-actioned people. I retired from the hospital maybe 15 years ago. I retired from my office seven years ago, along a very nice career in a very nice place. So, I think we've heard pretty much what I was going to repeat, but I will say that I'm also a board director of the Allegheny Foundation. And essentially, my major interest with the Allegheny Foundation and with the Community Service Board is to help our community. It's not going to be a surprise to anybody that the number of people who are having mental crises, overdoses, drug-related problems is booming. And if you look at the statistics, Covington and Allegheny County are among the worst in the state. There isn't any doubt about that. So what we've had, and this is just, I can't give you a number of years, but it's five or six years ago, there has been a Crisis Intervention Center at the emergency room, and they do the best they can. It is true that the emergency room is just up to its ears in patients, many of them from time to time waiting for a bed, and the beds just aren't available. So what this proposal provides, and it's very much needed in our community, is the place to put these people where they can get treatment. What they're doing in the emergency room is just sitting there. If there is a treatment that's needed, a medical treatment, they're going to get it. But this is, there are a couple of things I really like about this proposal, and one of them is that 23-hour, those 23-hour beds. But the other thing is the ability to keep people longer. And if it works the way I'm sure Ingrid wants it to work, treat them and release them so that they get the treatment they need, don't need to find an inpatient bed somewhere around the state of Virginia. So, my position again is absolutely in support of this, for all the reasons I said. And if there's a community or county in Virginia that needs it more, you're going to have to look for it. Thank you.
Thank you, W. Crandall.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. To the Planning Commission, to the City Council of Covington, thank you for allowing us to speak this evening on behalf of the Allegheny Highlands Community Services Board. First and foremost, my name is Gregory Howard. I was a former resident of Covington, 121 East Perry Street in Covington, now an Allegheny County resident at 2100 Trail Block 4 in Crowes, Virginia, or now Covington, Virginia. I want everybody to look at me, just real quickly. And I want you to look, and I want you to tell me, do you see somebody crazy here? Do you see somebody that's mentally sick or ill?
Oh, my.
You're all dead wrong, because I am a mental health patient. In 2016, I had a severe nervous breakdown that decapacitated me for 18 months. I left a job that I had been in for over 20 years, wiped out. I had paranoia. I was medicated. I had suicidal tendencies. Thank God I didn't have drug addiction or alcohol addiction, and that's why I felt so hard. So the stigma that is around mental health today does not make us all crazy lunatics. It makes us mental health patients. There are millions of Americans who cannot stand at this podium tonight and admit that they are a mental health patient, but I am one who can. I'm going to tell you that the Allegheny Highlands Community Services Board was instrumental in saving my life. I will say this, I ended up at the hospital in the ER in 2016, December, right before Christmas. And it was because of the officers of the Covington Police Department who took good care of me from the time I left home, and I didn't even know I left home. I was that far gone. I don't remember being at Allegheny originally. I don't remember cussing and saying the things that I said in that emergency room that night. I don't even remember telling the person on the upper end of that computer that I wanted help. But I had enough brains about me to be able to say, "I need your help." I sat in that emergency room for almost seven hours that night, waiting to get that help. I was taken by ambulance to Salem, Virginia, to the mental health facility over there. I was there for seven days. I was away from my family, my mom and dad, living in Crowes. It was hard for them to get back and forth to be there with me through castle. My girlfriend was disabled at the time, hard for her to travel back and forth. To have a facility such as we are talking about here tonight locally would mean so much to the quick treatment of those folks that are needing mental health treatment, whether it be just someone to talk to, whether it be a psychologist or psychiatrist, or medicine to get them started on the right path. This is something that we could be in the forefront of in our local community. We have so many bad things going on around us. You just heard Dr. Crandall say we're in one of the worst areas for mental health and drug addiction. The sheriff said the same thing. Why can't we be the first to have something good to say about mental health? Thank you so much for allowing me to speak this evening.
I'll go next, if that's okay. Members of Council and Commission.
Your name, please.
Greg Mattson. I live in the county, 205 Buckhorn Trail. Thanks for having me. This is a very important topic. I'm a big supporter of the C S B and Ingrid, and I support this project wholeheartedly. I've run three hospitals in the state of Virginia, others in Kansas and Arizona, but I've been CEO of Lewis Gale Allegheny, who's a much better one now, Nicole Hucker. I've worked for Sponsoring Regional in Fredericksburg, and currently with Corrillian Clinic, and run a hospital in Lexington. And I really want to give you the hospital point of view. This is a national crisis, a local crisis. And if you walk in the emergency room, which I have been in ER probably most every day for the last 30 years, I was in there today, I saw a mental health patient in crisis, and I was thinking about this meeting. And I wish you could see, sometimes we have more officers than nurses in our ER. And these patients, I guess I wanted to say two really important things. They're not getting the care they need. They need the care Ingrid and her team provides. And number two, when our emergency rooms fill up, there are other patients who cannot get a bed. If you come in with a stroke or a heart attack, you would hope that there's a bed available where you can take care of these patients. So when ER gets too full, it causes problems throughout the whole community. And this facility, I think, would alleviate that congestion and go all the way to the Allegheny Highlands. So I just want to give my support to the project, and if there's any questions I can ever answer, I'm glad to do it. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission, City Council. My name is Nicole Wilson Tucker. I'm the CEO/CNO of Lewis Gale Hospital Allegheny. I want to elaborate on the statistics from Al and what Greg said. The National Institute for Mental Health, as of 2022, cited that there are 59.3 million people in the United States that experience mental health crisis. That is one in three, one in four, depending upon what survey you cite. That means in this room alone, one out of every three people have a mental health crisis, whether we have identified or not identified. Lewis Gale Hospital Allegheny fully supports the Community Services Board in this endeavor. Ingrid and her team, the entire team, and she's one of the largest employers in the county, so that should speak to the amount of mental health crises we have are very imperative. People come to the hospital, it's not just physical ailments. Sometimes people have disabilities and illness that you can't see. And I would bet that one in three people in this room have had a friend or family member impacted by suicide. In saying that, Ingrid and her team have put together a comprehensive plan that is sustainable in this community and this environment that would bring economic development and jobs. Also, it would help those who are looking to expand their career, maybe leave the acute care setting, to transition to care that people need. Taking off my CEO/CNO hat, I will say this as a citizen. We cannot continue to practice in secular methods and get improved results. We are a strong knit community who wants to improve, and when we say that we want to advance, we have to be the change that we want to see. So I definitely encourage all of you to give this great consideration. Just another statistic, there are nine mental health hospitals in the state of Virginia and the Commonwealth. We know that those are underpaid and under-resourced. In fact, we've had a state hospital in the past three years close. When you look at the socioeconomics and where patients are coming from, it's always going to be the larger zip codes, Virginia Beach, Reston, those areas are going to get first treatment on where the patients go. If we say that we want to end mental crisis and improve our community, we have to give it a strong consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else speaking for? Say your name, please.
Gordon Reynolds. Gordon Reynolds. I am a peer recovery specialist with the Allegheny Highlands Community Service Board. I'm someone that he talked about with lived experience. I've seen both sides of the situation. I've been with the Community Service Board for five years, and my first job was at the CIT facility. And I've seen how the law enforcement, how they're not able to do their job keeping, you know, setting in the hospitals and the waits. So this kind of facility is, you know, it's paramount to have, because we do not need our children separated from their parents. And we need a place like this to have, keep them close and local, so peers like me can go and talk to them, you know, tell our lives, tell our stories. And once they get out of this situation and get back in their path to recovery, they will come to Community Service Board, use one of the other locations around here, you know, locally, and trust in us to do this. So, you know, I just wanted to say this is a great opportunity, and I thank Ingrid and everyone for this, because like Al said, the Community Service Board, they saved my life. And we are capable of doing something like this for the community, because addiction, mental illness, there's not no one in this room that, they don't know someone that, in their family, that affects everybody. It's a spider web, so it's not alone. So, in this, we all stand together, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Leister. I live in Edgemont area of Covington. I am very excited to hear about this program. As a nurse, I've worked in critical care and emergency room at Allegheny, at Augusta Medical, and Bath Community Hospital currently. And we have so many people that come in with these problems and very limited resources to get them. All we can do is medically clear them and then start the calls for where they're going. And it's very difficult to find anything close by. It's very difficult for families, especially for children. And the parents do have to sit in the hospital with them. They have to have some kind of support or other in the emergency department. Makes it difficult for staff who have to take care of these people that have a great deal of needs most of the time, and it takes away from medical emergencies that come in. But also, from just a citizen's standpoint, I see so much on social media and in the news where people want to shoot down these programs that people have come up with, that people are offering, and at the same time, talking about the need for jobs, the need for support for mental health. And then we shoot down every idea that there is because of the proximity to the building where it's going to be housed, to their neighborhood, to their homes. But what people don't understand, and I say this as someone who's had a lot of family members, friends, neighbors, patients who have had these problems, what they don't realize is these people are out walking the streets now, not getting help because we don't have it. They're in Walmarts, they're in your neighborhood, they're around the schools, they're around churches, they're in the neighborhoods, they're in every neighborhood in this community. And we need somebody to help them. So I fully support this program.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else speaking for?
Members of Council, Planning Commission, my name is Edman Minsmeyer. I own the property at 129 Marion Avenue that's listed in the plan. And while I think this is a much-needed service to provide to the community, I do not think this is the most appropriate place for it. I think it is too small and believe that it will be overrun with patients within the first two to three weeks. Speaking from my own personal experience in fire, BMS, and nursing, there are a lot of mental health patients that do not get the help that they need. They do end up committing suicide. But what about the ones who do get the help that they need? You know, they may have to go somewhere else to get the help they need, but do you know why most people are going to the hospitals and why all the hospitals are overrun with mental health? Because no one wants to stay in the area they live in to receive help. Many people don't know this. In 2018, I attempted to commit suicide. I suffered from PTSD. I have been in treatment since 2018. I had to go outside of the county because of the stigma associated with mental health crisis and with PTSD. I can tell you, while this facility is a great thing, and I think it would be a wonderful thing to have in the area, I think you are looking too small. That is why I'm against this. It is too small. You are not going to be able to alleviate the issues within the community with a center this small. I do feel like this is a very needed thing, but as far as location and size, I think this is a poor financial decision, because in a year, two years, this facility will be beyond its capacity, not able to do what it needs to do, and you have just sunk a bar of some money in a building that you're going to turn around, close down, and sell to open a bigger facility. I do not think that this is good for the city at this time. Granted, there's not a lot of business trying to come into the city, but there's also a lot of businesses that would like to come here, and a place located that centrally to downtown that's not on Main Street could be a huge, huge draw for someone that would be bringing in good tax revenue for the city that we would not be receiving with Community Service Board in that position. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Edman Minsmeyer. Anybody else speaking against? Hearing nothing else at this point, I'm going to close the public comment section of this meeting.
I will close the public comment section.
Okay. Now's when we get down to business. Yep, it's going to be your turn again, because we got some questions. All right, folks, what are your thoughts? Asking questions?
Didn't you say you would administer medications?
Yes, we'll have, yes, we'll have, they have now a state-of-the-art medication machine, so we have to have a special science room to put the medication machine in. And of course, we can administer meds if they're there for 23 hours and give them the psych meds that they need, or whatever it is that they need. Currently now, if they come into our clinic setting, you have to pop calling and prescription. You have to see if they have it at C D S or one of the local pharmacies. Sometimes it's not there. Sometimes it takes a day or two for it to be there. I'm concerned because many of the people coming out of state hospital now, they're thinking about, at the state level, only giving them two days' worth of medications when they come out of state hospital. They're not going to make it when they come out of state hospital with two days of medication. So that's some of the concerns. So they'll have medications.
Consideration under emergency situations.
Yes, sir. So we'll have psychiatry. This is 24/7, 365 psychiatry, nursing, clinical, peers. We're even going to put our mobile crisis team in there, so that if someone needs something out in the community, our mobile crisis team can respond. CIT, everything's going to be there.
How many new employees do you anticipate?
We're looking at about 20. I'm probably going to run it on like three-hour shifts, like 312s, to make it attractive to people to come there and work. So 312s, and then they have some days off.
Do you anticipate having your own enforcement staff at any point in time?
We already work with our CIT program. So we received funding from the state for our CIT program, which pays for three deputies. And in addition to those three deputies, it also pays for two clinicians and two peders. We have requested additional funds from the state because law enforcement salaries have gone up in order to recruit and retain, keep people. So we're asking for some additional dollars from the state to support CIT.
And I was going to ask the sheriff that question. Is the chief still here?
I could probably insert anything about CIT.
Well, I was going to ask them if they were going to add.
Here's the chief.
Chief, do you anticipate, sorry to put you on the spot, do you anticipate increasing your force?
No, I've not ever received any funding for CIT.
Okay. All right. Sorry, everybody. So let's talk about the facility itself. Obviously... Obviously, you're talking about increased traffic on that corner.
I don't know that it would be considered increased traffic. At a max, there'd be like 22 people in there at one time. That's at a max. But there may be days that we don't have any assessments because somebody may not walk in. So when you're saying increased traffic, let me explain to you what happens with the CIT assessment site. So if an officer has a CIT case, they're going to take custody of that person, bring them to the Crisis Receiving Center. There will be an officer waiting there to take custody so that officer can get back on the road and do community policing. That's the problem. When you sit in the ER and you don't have a center like this, then our officers are sitting down in the ER all day, all night, and then they can't take care of what is going on in the community. So an officer will be on site to take custody if it's an emergency custody order. We're going to take in voluntaries and voluntarys as they walk in. If it's a person just like me and I want to go in and talk to somebody because I'm having depression, then I'll be able to walk in and be able to get assessed. It may be that I'll meet the criteria to be there, and if that's the case, they can do a follow-up with the C S V and come on my road.
Okay. Lighting at your facility, obviously, there is some lighting there. The parking lot has, I think the parking lot has two lights in it.
As a church, it already has some lighting. We would probably add some additional lighting. It won't be lighting to let the residents and the community. In addition to that, we will have secure access with cameras and door swipe systems. So door swipes means you can't just walk into the facility and just open a door and just walk in. Staff will have what we call door swipe accessibility. So if I'm going to go through a door, I work there, I'll be able to go through the doors. Well, the cameras on the outside perimeter, cameras on the inside perimeter. The cameras will be on the areas that are not treatment areas because we can't put cameras in treatment areas. They would be in the hallways and corridors.
Lighting directed towards.
Well, the backside of the building doesn't really have anything beside it. It just lets up the building. The front side is.
Thinking about the side facing Lexington, that's where you're going to, that's where patrol cars will pull up, drop somebody off, so on. Could I ask that those lights be considered ordering use off with a timer?
Yes.
Does that make sense? That way, there's security there when somebody comes in, light comes on when the car stops with people there or somebody activates a light. And then when that's taken care of and the door closes, the light goes off.
Okay, you're right, Tom, I know that.
Yeah, yeah.
We will get to the point down the road where we'll do a site plan, and it'll be submitted to the city government for review and comment and approval. That being said, standing here right now, I would expect timer-based stuff like you're talking about, motion-sensitive, as well as dark sky compliant because the residential folks to the south, I guess, across the alley, they don't want a new facility shining lights in their bedroom at 2:00 in the morning. So everything we're going to do is going to be dark sky compliant. Those are generally speaking pretty standard for a facility like this. And given that we've got Lexington where we want to be and it faces commercial across the street, we can be a little more aggressive for safety and clear vision for law enforcement coming in and emergency services in general coming and going.
What kind of timeframe do you see for something else to happen here? Mr. Ensminger raised a good point that, I mean, if the folks roll in like we think they're going to, you're going to be up to your eye box.
Well, I think you have to keep in mind that the C S V is still going to be open. We're still serving people. So from 9 to 5, Monday through Friday, the C S V is going to be open. Emergency services is 24/7/365 regardless of whether we have this facility or not. And in addition, the only reason and the only purpose for me to stand in here tonight is to get the special use permit for the overnight bids. But we could open it as a 23-hour assessment site, and I wouldn't have to get approval here tonight from any of you all because it's already zoned C3.